The Board will now come to order. Madam Clerk, please call the row.
Alderwoman Tyus, Alderwoman Flowers, Alderman Bosley, Alderman Moore, Alderwoman Hubbard, Alderwoman Ingracia, Alderwoman Young, Alderman Conway, Alderman Ortman, Alderman Vollmer, Alderman Villa, Alderman Arnoldt, Alderwoman Howard, Alderwoman Florida, Alderwoman Behringer, Alderman Rhodey, Alderman Kennedy, Alderwoman Davis, Alderman Schmidt, Alderman French, Alderman Boyd, Alderman Vacaro, Alderman Ogilvy, Alderman Cohn, Alderman Williamson, Alderman Carter, Alderwoman Crewson, President Reed.
Here.
Alderwoman Tyus, Alderman Bosley, Alderman Moore, Alderwoman Hubbard, Alderwoman Ingracia, Alderwoman Young, Alderman Ortman, Alderman Vollmer, Alderman Rhodey, Alderman Kennedy, Alderman French, Alderman Ogilvy, Alderman Williamson, Alderwoman Crewson. Seventeen present.
Quorum being present. Unless everyone in chambers and galleries is able to stand, please rise for prayer. Giving all honor to God. Almighty God, source of all authority, we humbly ask guidance in our deliberations and wisdom in our conclusions. Amen. Dispense with line item three. Introduction of honored guests. Any introduction of honored guests? Alderwomen from the sixteenth.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board. I would like to have as my special guest today is David Holmes with the Plumbers and Pipe Fitters, Anthony Lancia with AGC, and from the carpenters Jeff Hans, Keith Taylor, and Paul Higgins. Thank you.
All the women from the twenty-second.
Good morning, Mr. President, members of the Board. I have as my honored guest Mr. Leroy Grant with Grant Communications. And I'm going to take liberty to have our collective revenue, Greg Daley is my honored guest this morning.
All the women from the fifteenth.
Well, actually, Mr. President, members of the Board, our collector of revenue, Honorable Greg Daley is my special guest today.
Greg.
Sorry.
All right. Let's give Greg Daley another round of applause. He always applauds the tax man. All the women from the fourteenth.
I'd like to have as my special guest today Gary Otten from Painters District Council Two and Leroy Grant from AT&amp;T.
Any further introductions? We also have Sam Coleman and Chi Mathis from the License Collector's Office. Thanks for joining us. Aldermen from the ninth.
I thought I was invisible.
No, you moved.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board. I'd like to have for my honored guest today Ronnie Hour and Mike Kegel.
All the women from the nineteenth.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board. I wanted to add to the welcome to Chi Mathis that she's the new Director of Communications on behalf of the License Collector's Office. So if you want to send information or get information, that's the lady to see. Thank you.
Any further introductions? Any further introductions? Aldermen from the tenth round that wraps up. So we move on. Aldermen from the eighteenth. Recognize on approval of the minutes.
Members of the Board, I move to approve the minutes of January thirty-first.
Move by the Alderwoman from the eighteenth. Second by the Alderwoman from the twenty-fifth. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose, motion carries. Report to city officials.
Report of city officials can be found in Sections A, B, and C of the agenda and have been placed in all Alderman's mailboxes.
We dispense with line item seven. Would anyone like to take any bills off of any of our informal calendars? Would anyone like to take any bills off of any of our informal calendars? We'll dispense with line items eight through ten. First reading of board bills.
Board Bill Three Twelve, sponsored by Alderman Vollmer and ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for fifty-seven oh seven through fifteen and fifty-seven twenty-five through twenty-seven Park Ridge Way and containing a severability clause. Board Bill Three Thirteen, sponsored by Alderman Vollmer and ordinance recommended by the Board of Public Service to conditionally vacate travel in a portion of Kemper beginning west of Hereford and continuing to a point previously vacated by ordinance six eight five four four in the city. Board Bill Three Fourteen, sponsored by Alderwoman Flowers and ordinance approving the petition to establish the Carey Avenue Community Improvement District, establishing the Carey Avenue Community Improvement District. Board Bill Three Fifteen, sponsored by Alderman Schmidt and ordinance recommended by the Board of Exman and Apportement authorizing a supplemental appropriation, amending ordinance six nine four three two, commonly referred to as the City of St. Louis Annual Operating Plan for fiscal year 2013 through 2014, appropriating projected excess-led remediation fund revenues to address certain expenditures in the Building Division-led remediation program for the current fiscal year in the amount of two-hundred-and-nine-thousand-five-hundred dollars and containing an emergency clause. That's the extent of our first readings.
Reference to committee.
To the Neighborhood Development Committee, Board Bill Three Twelve, to the Streets Committee, Board Bill Three Thirteen, to the Ways and Means Committee, Board Bill Three Fourteen, to the Health and Human Services Committee, Board Bill Three Fifteen. That's the extent of reference to committee.
Second reading.
Following board bill was reported out of the Ways and Means Committee, Board Bill Two Seven Three, sponsored by Alderwoman Flowers and ordinance recommended by the Board of Public Service authorizing and directing the mayor and the comptroller to execute upon receipt of and in consideration of some of one dollar of permanent irrevocable easement on the Metropolitan St. Louis Sewer District, the exclusive right to build and maintain a sewer or sewers, including stormwater improvements on the strip or strips of ground described and in City Block ninety-one fifteen and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill Two Eight Nine, sponsored by Alderwoman Young and ordinance approving the petition of owner of certain real property to establish the Community Improvement District, establishing the Magnolia Community Improvement District and containing an emergency clause and containing a severability clause. The following board bill was reported out of the Public Utilities Committee, Board Bill Three Hundred, sponsored by Alderwoman Flowers and ordinance recommended by and authorizing and directing the Board of Public Service to provide for building, facility, equipment improvements to the waterworks system of the city water division by projects approved by the Water Revenue Bonds to appropriate and pay the estimated cost of eight million dollars from the Water Works contingent account containing sections for a description of work, the mayor's executive orders, contract advertising statutes, and a public work emergency clause. That's the extent of our second reading.
We will dispense with line item fourteen, perfection consent calendar.
Board Bill Two Eight Six, sponsored by Alderwoman Behringer and ordinance intended to eliminate, reduce, and remedy discrimination in housing, employment, education, services, public accommodations, and real property transactions and uses and to provide equal opportunity enforcement and containing a severability clause.
Aldermen from the seventeenth. You recognize on the motion for the perfection consent calendar.
Yes, Mr. President, members of the Board. I move that we perfect, we approve the perfection calendar.
Move by the Alderwoman from the seventeenth. Second by the Alderwoman from the twenty-fifth. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose, motion carries.
That's the extent of perfection consent.
We would dispense with line items sixteen through nineteen and move for adoption our currency resolution calendar. I entertain a second on that motion. Second by the Alderwoman from the twenty-fifth. All the women from the fifteenth and Alderwomen from the twentieth. Would you like to approach the dice?
Mr. President, members of the Board, this is indeed a momentous time for our region. I'd like to read what our resolution is. It was twenty, two-hundred-and-fifty years in the making. And rather than saying whereas, I'm going to start out with "once upon a time." Once upon a time, legend has it that on or about February fourteenth, seventeen sixty-four, Rene Auguste Chutot, more commonly Auguste Chodo, a French lad fourteen years old, co-founded the great city of St. Louis with his stepfather Pierre de Leclerc Le Guest, more commonly Pierre Leclede, and thirty other men who cleared a site at what would later become the foot of Walnut Street in which had been selected in November seventeen sixty-three as a fur trading outpost to exercise a French fur trading monopoly grant in the Missouri region. And the selection of St. Louis was political and practical from the beginning. What was to be a fur trading outpost became the village of St. Louis when Fort Deschart, on the east side of the Mississippi River, where Pierre Leclerc and Auguste Chutot were wintering, was turned over to the British in seventeen sixty-three. So it was resolved to go to the west bank of the Mississippi River, which they believed to be controlled by France. Once finding the area at the confluence of the Mississippi and Missouri rivers too marshy, Pierre Leclerc moved fifteen miles downriver to the first elevated and accessible site of woodland and prairie area. The advantages of the site of our city of St. Louis and its great region have been known at least as far back as the Mississippian culture of the eighth to twelfth centuries, with vestiges of that culture reflected in the remaining Cahokia mounds in Illinois and the one sugarloaf mound remaining in St. Louis. From a network of mounds that once provided the appellation of our fair city as mound city. Pierre Leclerc prophetically pronounced, and this is a translation because I can't do the French, "I have found a situation where I am going to form a settlement which might become hereafter one of the finest cities in America. So many advantages are embraced in its site by its locality and central position for forming settlements." And the city of St. Louis, as we know, was named after King Louis the Ninth of France, patron saint of King Louis the Fifteenth, whom Pierre Leclerc had served as a soldier before leaving Boudot, France. And whereas the once small village of St. Louis became the gateway to the West and the host of the Olympics and Louisiana Purchase Exposition World's Fair in nineteen oh four, it is now a center of commerce, transportation hub, a progressing leader in biotechnology and life sciences, host of medical research, center of higher education, recognized entrepreneurial center, known for its financial services, home of a world famous zoo, botanical garden, art museum, and science center and boasts a number of Fortune five-hundred companies. And whereas, please bear with me, you call it a sesstercentennial, semi-quinscentennial, or bissequinquageneri, or, we didn't put this one in, a quarter-millennial, St. Louis is celebrating its two-hundred-and-fiftieth birthday on February fourteenth, two thousand and fourteen, and preparing for its better days to come. Now therefore, be it resolved that we, the Board of Aldermen, pause in our deliberation to eat cake and to recognize the two-hundred-and-fiftieth birthday of the city of St. Louis and the St. Louis region. We hope that all will celebrate this momentous occasion, take this opportunity to be grateful for all of the blessings bestowed on our region and fly the flag proudly of the city of St. Louis. We further direct the Clerk of the Board to spread a copy of this resolution across the minutes of the proceedings and further to prepare two commemorative copies to the end that one may be presented to the full Board of Aldermen and the other to the mayor, both to be permanently displayed in the Board of Aldermen Chambers and the City Hall Rotunda respectively. And this has been signed off on and banked. Thank you very much.
Good morning. Thank you for putting up with our shenanigans. This is a momentous occasion and we are sharing this moment together, celebrating our two-hundred-and-fiftieth year as a city, which I think is amazing. Our story is an imperfect story, but it is a unique story in that we are a city that was pre-colonial. And I think that's amazing. We've shared an interesting journey and I have invited some of our city leaders, like our collector of revenue, Greg Daley. The comptroller will be here any minute, as well as the mayor, so that we could share this moment together as a family, which I look at government's role as kind of being as parental, you know. So I'd like Greg to come up, our collector of revenue, and say a few words so that we don't have to bore you with my idea of reading editorials from the Post-Dispatch.
Good morning, everybody. It's a pleasure to be back at the St. Louis Board of Aldermen to see some of my old colleagues here once again. But today, we're here to celebrate two-hundred-and-fifty years for the city of St. Louis. You know, as the Alderwoman from the fifteenth had mentioned, you know, it's a big deal. It's a big deal. Wish the weather was a little bit better, but it's a big deal today. And I think we all, the participation and the love that we have for our city, I think is something we all want to cherish, all want to celebrate. So let me be one of the first to wish the city of St. Louis a happy birthday. Two-hundred-and-fifty years. It's an honor, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you very much.
Aldermen from the eighteenth. And we have the former Alderman from the thirteenth here. I'm sure we'll have, we'll get him in here in a minute. Alderwoman from the eighteenth, please proceed.
Yes, Mr. President, members of the Board. On the occasion of the two-hundred-and-fiftieth celebration and anniversary of the city of St. Louis, it, in my opinion, merits just a moment to reflect. St. Louis has come from a long way, I believe, from its beginnings, not only as a colonized area by the French, but also an area that had chattel slavery. It's come a long way since that time. It has struggled with social, economic, and political issues since that time. Some, it has emerged quite admirably and other ways it has continued work to do. But we must recognize the diversity of this area and realize that each and every part of that diversity not only made a contribution to this city, but it's helped to enrich this city, a diversity that will help move this city, I believe, into the future. So despite its beginnings and its troubled times, it still, I believe, merits a recognition and a celebration of its two-hundred-and-fifty years of struggle and change over time. And as one of those descendants of a family that has been in this area since before it was a part of the United States, we can speak about the history and the struggles that it took to survive in this area from a French territory to now a part of the United States. That struggle is the story of this city. And ultimately, that struggle is the story of the United States. One, we should not cover over as we celebrate and light the candles and pop the balloons. We should not cover it over, but take this time to remember that we have come some distance and we have some distance to go. But we can take this moment to celebrate together the diversity and the change that has happened. Thank you.
Alderwoman from the nineteenth.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board. I am always in awe when my esteemed colleague that just spoke gives us the ultimate understanding of the history because he knows it well. And so I would like to stand and celebrate the city of St. Louis and give some very specifics from my community. As I grew up and watched this town with as many segments during my childhood, I didn't have a true understanding other than the conversations I overheard in my living room with my parents and their friends exactly what was going on. But as I evolved to high school and I went to Fallon Tech, it was a high school that allowed me to understand even more by attending a school that had others there different from my neighborhood. But then I decided I wanted to learn a little bit more. And as I have progressed through the years, working on behalf of this city in many ways, not only on the local level, but the state level and the federal level, I've realized that we have a lot of richness that we don't celebrate on a regular basis. And so I just took a few moments here just to look at some of the things and remember some of the people that enriched our community. And when I think back, I go back and I think about, you know, sports is one of those things that brings us together. Sports and music, entertainment. It brings folks together. And so I think about James Cooper Bell, you know, the Negro baseball player that everybody loved. It didn't matter that he came out of the Jeff Van der Lu neighborhood. He was fast, he could hit that ball, and everybody loved him. I also look back at Josephine Baker. A lot of people don't know that she lived in a midtown neighborhood here in the city of St. Louis. She was a jazzy lady. She went to Paris. She put us all on the map. She was phenomenal. She brought us together. And then I think about the political side of it. And I think about those guys back in, just like my parents' time in dealing with politics. And they were true politicians. They didn't play games. They sat down in the back room and fought and cussed or did whatever had to be done. But when they stepped out in public, there was unity and decisions that were made. And so I talk about Joseph Clark out of the Ville neighborhood. That was a phenomenal guy. You need to know the history on him. And you know, when you talk about Jordan Chambers, Pop had it going on, and you know that. But he came out of that Jeff Van der Lu neighborhood. But he was, he was a person to go to. He was a person that you knew if he gave his word to something, it was that. And then I looked at the institutions. And I go to the neighborhood first. And there's a project going on in the Jeff Van der Lu neighborhood right now, Tilly's Corner. Ms. Tilly had her little neighborhood store. You know, she was what, an entrepreneur with a little side convenience store for forty-five years. And unfortunately, the building fell down, but a number of people in the community have come together, put that site on the National Historic Register, getting it together. But we must also never forget what education does for a community. And we have to talk about Homage G. Phillips Hospital. Because what it did was it allowed people who wouldn't have had a chance any other way, but a limited chance, to be trained as doctors and nurses. And most people don't know that Homage G. Phillips trained more doctors and nurses than any other training facility in the entire United States of America. And it has never, the record has never been broken as of this day. So we have a lot to be thankful for in this town. But we also need to reflect and we need to do better in how we do business. You know, we had the first kindergarten here in the United States of America, in St. Louis. You know, we did a lot of firsts here. But somehow, we kind of forget about that and we get into some nonsense. But I love the city of St. Louis. I spent a lot of darned time trying to make it better. And I'm not on anybody's six-figure payroll or anything like that, nor do I want to be because I need to be free so I can say what I need to say. But what I need to know is that things are going to get better. We'll understand more and use the political side of what we do in a more effective way. But when you celebrate two-hundred-and-fifty years, you have to reflect. So I say happy birthday to the city of St. Louis and may we all, with God's blessing and grace, do a much, much, much better job, even though the history is good. Thank you.
That was a good summation, Alderwoman. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Alderwoman from the sixteenth.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board. I have to say that all of my relatives came over from Ireland in the eighteen-fifties. And they left Ireland because they weren't allowed to speak their language. They were being starved to death. And when they came to the States, they landed in New Orleans. They landed in New Orleans because the French allowed them to practice their Catholicism. But like all refugees, like all immigrants, they needed to find jobs. So they headed to St. Louis. And that is where they settled. When they came into St. Louis, and this is a tidbit I learned, they had to settle in a ward. And once they chose their ward, their aldermen gave them their citizenship. But here's the difference. In eighteen fifty-four, when John Tierney came to the city of St. Louis, women had no right to vote. So the only naturalized citizens in the city of St. Louis were the men. So I tell people, I know my ancestors are joyous because there is a female Irish alderman sitting here today. And the last thing I want to say is that Kingsbury Place was torn down. And unfortunately, most of those relics are actually in the museums in Chicago. And it breaks my mother's heart because my people were a lot of servants and they served as servants in those mansions. So I hope someday we can get some of the relics of those areas back to St. Louis. Thank you.
All right, thank you. The mayor's joined us, so you want to take back over the mic and do the rest of it?
Mayor Slay, we're here today to celebrate our two-hundred-and-fiftieth anniversary as a city, which I find to be quite an important moment and time in our history. And with that, Alderman Schmidt has written this wonderful resolution, which we've already read and do not want to bore the Board of Aldermen. So with this resolution, we'd like to give this to you in honor of our two-hundred-and-fiftieth birthday. It is in bank. And we hope to hang it somewhere in a prominent place in City Hall to celebrate this moment.
Thank you so much. Thank you all. First and foremost, I just want to say happy anniversary, happy two-hundred-and-fiftieth anniversary to all of St. Louisans and particularly to this important body of government that we're all a part of. Certainly, I want to thank all of you individually and collectively for your leadership, for all the good work that you do today. On behalf of the people of the city of St. Louis, your work is so very important and it's as important now as it's ever been. and it's as important now as it's ever been. But as we are here today, gathered to, to celebrate our, our past, to celebrate 250 years of our great city, as we reflect upon where we have been and how we got here, let us also reflect upon where we are today and we should never take the future for granted. As we know, the world is rapidly changing around us and to, to meet the growing demands of a global economy, cities have to evolve. They have to evolve to, to meet the needs of a global economy, to address developing technologies and to also be competitive in global competition. Government structures and political lines that we are working within today and that have served us well for so many, many years will not necessarily serve us well in the future. I am encouraged by recent, particularly recent collaborations between St. Louis City and St. Louis County. Too many political lines have divided us for far too long. Make no mistake about it, we are stronger together and we are better together. So as we celebrate our past, let us recommit ourselves to working together to create a more economically, socially, and environmentally sustainable city and region focused on good jobs, strong schools, safe neighborhoods, convenient transportation, healthy families. Let's also focus on making this region a, a region that's more efficient in terms of its use of tax dollars and one that is even more welcoming, more accepting, and more inclusive for more people. Again, we will be stronger as a result and people today, tomorrow, and 250 years from now depend on us. So again, let's, let's celebrate this day. Let's celebrate what we can be so proud of, but let's remember that there's a lot of challenges ahead of us and we will be better if we work together addressing those challenges. And, and in conclusion, I just want to note that I did receive a letter from the President of the United States, Barack Obama, personally congratulating us on 250 years. So I want to thank the President as well for acknowledging this very, very special occasion. And there's certainly plenty of things for everybody to be engaged in. There's a lot of diverse activities and events and programs to participate in. You can go to STL250.org and look at it and hopefully you and all of our constituents can, you know, participate in a big way so we can really, truly celebrate this occasion. Thank you so much.
Also want to just tell the mayor thanks one more time from all of us that for bending his schedule to get here this morning, it was a push for him and he made it. He made it under the wire, so we cannot thank you enough for that and for your leadership. And the things that you outlined in your, in your speech, when you're talking about diversity, you were talking about, you know, bringing people together and we are better together. So it is, I think that we all need to continue to work under that guideline and we are gonna, we're gonna continue to strive and survive and grow. You know, we, we, we can read the history books about, you know, Lewis and Clark and Le Cleed and what they've done. We have an opportunity now to write the history about this day. So like the mayor said, 200, 250 years from now, what are they going to read about this time, about how we've begun to work together to turn our city around? So I cannot thank you enough for your leadership and thank Alderman Florida and Alderman Schmidt for bringing this resolution forward and making sure that we recognize the 250th anniversary as a new launching point.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much. I was just mentioning time. No, I can't do that. Very good. Are we getting a second?
One, two, three.
The Alderman from the 15th, I think, actually made that. She made that last night.
Homemade gooey butter cake?
Homemade gooey butter cake. So if you want to taste some homemade gooey butter cake, and there's a reason it's gooey butter cake, but if you want to taste some homemade gooey butter cake, today is your opportunity. Thank you, Alderman, for all that. It's been moved and seconded that we adopt our courtesy resolution counter. All in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carries. With that, we'll return to our regular order of business. With dispensal line item 21, second reading.
The following resolution was reported out of the Rules Committee, Resolution 223, sponsored by Aldermen and Alderwomen. Moore, President Reed, Tyus Flowers, Bosley Hubbard, Ingracia Young, Valmer Villa, Arnowitz, Howard, Florida, Rhodey Kennedy Davis Schmidt, French Boyd, Vicaro Cone, Williamson Carter and Crusen. The Board of Aldermen directs the city to prominently display the red, black, and green flag at, in, and outside of City Hall each year during the month of February.
Alderman from the 18th, you recognize on second reading, Resolution Number 223.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I move for adoption of Resolution 223.
Moved by Alderman from the 18th, seconded by Alderman from the 20th. Alderman, please proceed.
Yes, Mr. President, members on the board. On behalf of the sponsor, this resolution was one heard in the Resolutions Committee and passed out unanimously from the Resolutions Committee. It does simply what the clerk read and that is to direct the city to display the red, black, and green flag during February, which we know is Black History Month. That particular flag was created in 1920 from the Universal Negro Improvement Association. They created what they called the Declarations of the Rights of Negroes of the World. And Article 39 of that Declaration says that we should have the red, black, and green as a symbol of the contribution that Africa and Africa's people, the diaspora of Africans, have made to the world and to America. That particular time was August 13th of 1920 in Madison Square Garden. They had their international convention at that time and those declarations were adopted and the flag was established at that time. It has since then continued to grow in popularity and was ultimately adopted by the Association for the Study of African History, or what they call African-American History and Culture here in the United States, which was the organization created by Carter G. Woodson, who was the founder of then Negro History Week in 1926 and later now known as Black History Month. Carter G. Woodson created this time period to recognize the significant contributions African-Americans have made to the history of America that at that time, and even today we see has basically been forgotten or left out of the writings and the history that many of the historians talk about. So the, the resolution simply directs the city to display this flag during Black History Month as a way to remind the city of the contributions that a significant portion of its population has made to the history of St. Louis and America in general. With that, we would request favorable support.
Okay, thank you. Alderman from the 20th?
Mr. President, members of the board, at this time of our 250th anniversary, at our bicentennial, we created the flag for the city of St. Louis. I thought that we should note as we go down to see the cake in the rotunda, which is right down the first set of stairs, that we also note that the flag that you've just mentioned is being prominently displayed in the point where Alabama's flag once would have been. Alabama and Mississippi's flags, I believe, were removed some years ago because they contained part of the Confederate flag. So the very first flag that you will see before you get to Alaska today as you go down that wonderful flight of stairs is the African-American flag that we're speaking about today.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Alderman from the 18th, you recognize closed.
Yeah, I would also add, Mr. President, that in honor also of this resolution and Black History Month, the mayor has also displayed the red, black, and green in his office behind his podium where he speaks. And just in recognition of the rich diversity that the city has.
Excellent. Excellent.
With that, I would renew my motion.
It's been moved and seconded that we adopt Resolution Number 223. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
That's the extent of second reading of resolutions.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I would just like to say the, as we know, the sponsor of this resolution took ill and is in the hospital, but certainly on his behalf, he would like to thank all of the co-sponsors of the resolution.
Excellent. And he's talking about Alderman from the 18th, Alderman, I mean Alderman from the 4th, Alderman Moore. So we do want to thank him for bringing the idea forward and also thank you for, for working, working to get it passed and everything. We really appreciate it. Ms. Slay has unfinished business?
We have none.
Announcements?
Monday, the office will be closed for President's Day. Tuesday, we have Ways and Means Committee meeting at 9:00 a.m., Transportation and Commerce Committee meeting at 9:30 a.m. That's on Tuesday. Friday, full board meeting, 10:00 a.m. in the chambers. And also today, there will still be massages in the Kennedy Room until 12 o'clock. That's the extent of my announcements.
That's, that's something that you don't hear every day. Alderman from the 15th, you recognize-
Mr. President, members of the board, I'd like to invite everyone to the leisure room for cupcakes on behalf of Alderwoman Marlene Davis, cookies and punch on behalf of Alderman Vicaro. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Alderman from the 10th?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. Happy Valentine's Day to everyone here besides celebrating this wonderful event as we're celebrating the 250th birthday of St. Louis and also the contributions of African-Americans. Let us not be, forget our Alderman from the 3rd who asked Pierre Le Cleed and Alka Shoto to land it on the bank. He says, "I'm glad you guys finally got here. Salisbury Street needs some help." So let's go.
Any further announcements? Alderman from, Alderman from the 19th?
No, we may, we may have to bar him from a mic. I'm sorry. Thank you, Mr. President and members of the board. First, I'd like to give congratulations to Reliance Bank. We had our ribbon cutting for the new facility. It's located on Grand and Windsor Place in the 19th Ward directly across the street from Clyde C. Miller. That bank has been in town a long time, but you know, their corporate office is in front of that. So I, hopefully we can drag in some more banks into the city proper and make some products available. They're very interested in doing some very unique things with home loans and business loans. I'd also like to recognize Matty Moore. Her state representative, Joshua Peters, has appointed her as Director of a Board that's going to be advising him on senior problems and things for his district. And I know that Matty is one who serves her city well and so I'm looking forward to seeing some great things come out of that area in support of senior citizens. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any further announcements? Any further announcements? We also have our license collector here with us today. Thank you for coming on. Any further announcements? Any further announcements? Alderman from the 18th, you recognize on the motion to excuse.
Yes, Mr. President, members of the board. I move to excuse the Alderman from the 3rd, 4th, 5th, 6th, 7th, and 21st for necessary actions.
Moved by Alderman from, Alderman from the 18th, seconded by Alderman from the 28th. She gave me some second. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Hold on for the 18th, you recognize on the motion to adjourn.
Yes, Mr. President, members of the board. I move that the board adjourns until Friday, February 21st.
Moved by Alderman from the 18th, seconded by Alderman from the 11th. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Stand adjourned.